Okay, welcome, everybody. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. The very first thing on our agenda, or I guess I should say the next thing, because we just came from a joint meeting with the Board of Education. We do have an item on our agenda that we would like to dispose of before we enter into our joint meeting with the Board of County Commissioners. So if there is a motion, I'll entertain it now to go into special session.
Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second? Thank you. All in favor of going into special session, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we're in special session for the approval of an ordinance, the purchase agreement for 170 West Washington Street and 12 North Prospect Street.
By move, Mayor Housen, the ordinance is introduced on February 12, 2013, authorizing the purchase of property located in 170 West Washington Street and 12 North Prospect Street for the sum of $27,500. The ordinance stipulates four findings. Findings are that, one, the property has deteriorated to such an extent so as to constitute a serious and growing menace to public health, safety, and welfare. Two, the structure is likely to continue to deteriorate unless corrected. Three, continued deterioration will contribute to the liking or deterioration of the areas surrounding the structure. And, four, the owner has failed to correct the deterioration. The acquisition is to be in accordance with all terms and conditions outlined in the purchase agreement. Funding for this acquisition is from the Economic Development Fund.
Thank you. The motions been made by Mr. Brubaker, seconded by Mr. Munson. Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the yays and nays. All in favor of this ordinance, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. And now, go into our joint meeting with the Washington County Commissioners. Welcome, everybody. It's very nice to see you all here, and I hope the storm outside has nothing to do with the weather inside the City Hall, which is nothing but cordiality and positive energy here. So, I had recommended that we discuss four particular items. The first one being the Dolman Black Heritage Museum. I am aware that the city and the county both have a request before them from the Dolman Black Heritage Museum. And we have with us, in our audience, Wendy Perry, who is the curator of the museum, who can answer any questions that we have. But I just thought we could get a discussion going for where everybody stands on the possibility of funding for this organization. Is there anybody who would like to start the conversation?
I'll be happy to start the conversation.
Mr. Munson.
I support and have continued to support the Dolman Museum. I am assuming that this request is an ongoing request, which is an ongoing request of that amount, I think would be more than we contribute to our museum and library potentially combined. A bigger concern of mine is the report that, you know, I don't even know who paid for it anymore, there are so many consultant reports between, and I don't mean that in a negative sense. The Chamber has done some, the county has done some, but the A&amp;E report that we had that essentially talked about the lack of coordination, that we have a lot of different museums, arts councils, Contemporary School for the Arts, Dolman Museum, that all essentially are seeking support, and it seems to me, a lot of that is for the same thing. One, space. Two, staffing. And that recommendation, as I recall, recommended consolidation of a lot of these different arenas, and I just wonder, has that been looked into, to what degree, and who is it that is willing to follow up with that? Is that expected to be government that's following up with it? Is that the Arts Council that's following up? I'm assuming we all know the report I'm talking about, that we all were briefed on, and the question is, what's happening with it? Because this seems to fit right into that issue. The Discovery Station, and we have all these different entities that all need, are asking for our financial support, that I think if we could get everybody in, you know, that they have the Antique Mall that does very well, I would like to think an Arts and Entertainment Mall would too, where we can get some consolidation of services.
One of the things, I'll just offer a comment in terms of what I know, and Ms. Perry can always come forward and correct me. As far as I know, the museum, the Dolman Black Heritage Museum, right now has about 4,500 items in its collection. And so when I asked Alicia Parson-McBean about this possibility of perhaps partnering up with another museum, I think she was concerned about the sheer volume of the size of the collection. One of my other concerns was whether this request was ongoing in perpetuity, and the answer was absolutely not. The reason why they're seeking funds is because in order to get some of these technical assistant grants from the National Museum Association, one of...
There's two different ones. The state level, you have to have required for certain kind of open, easy get into their funding, thus Department of Housing and Community Development, as well as any kind of federal grant funding. You also have to have at least 20 to 25 hours open per week, open to the public, in order to qualify for those ones. The house, right now, is still the family home, and it's only open by appointment. Over the last year, I have been boxing things up, been trying to get some conservation problems under control, but it's a family home, it's not, the climate control isn't after that the ideal for, unfortunately, we are losing some artifacts that are in the basement, because it's just not a stable environment, so we need to get the things out of there. And just put on display, if you want to see the things, and we do do loans and stuff, like the Fine Arts Museum, and other organizations for certain artifacts that they may have in there, for their exhibit. But as a collection on its own, it has not stood to the public, at least the last five or six years.
So currently, the collection is in the home, the Dolman Family Home?
Yeah.
And in order for it to access the federal and state grants, what I hear you saying is that there have to be a certain maintenance of hours over a certain period of time that allows you to have access to those grants to begin with?
Yeah, you can't even apply unless you make some merger and they don't have to...
Any other comments? I don't think we're looking to take action necessarily today, but I thought this would be a good opportunity, since the request has been made by both, to both of the City Council and the Board of County Commissioners, that we could gauge the general level of support for this project. I too am a supporter of it. I think this is a really worthwhile endeavor. I think it adds to the diverse array of amenities and destinations that we have here in downtown Hagerstown, and it certainly can provide an educational value as well.
It also may fit in with items number two and three.
Absolutely.
I just wanted to comment on what Lou has said about getting some kind of collaborative...
Yeah. Could you come forward, and maybe, we have a microphone that you could speak into, for the benefit of people in the audience and at home?
Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
There are several organizations that are throughout the state that do that. There is one specifically in Baltimore that I was a part of for many years. And what they basically did is they come together, meeting monthly, and that includes Reginald Lewis, it included the Blacks and Wax, most of the African-American cultural institutions. And what that allows you to do is, when you have a collaborative group like that, you can go for big money, like Smithsonian has money available for collaborative efforts. So you get the Pratt Library, or you get the library here involved, you can go for hundreds, hundreds of thousands of dollars to do collaborative efforts. Some of the things that you'll see that's in Reginald Lewis now, were part of these collaborative things, where all the museums are included, and different components get put into the different institutions. So basically, their programming sort of flows around each other. I think that would be ideal for here, because that way you would be able to get people to come in for a weekend to, and participate in any kind of events that may be going on, the Blues Festival, or anything else that's going on. So that is really where you get some teeth into a group or a cultural organizations, if you do collaborate. So what you're saying has been done, and has been done successfully.
We need to find a way to do that here.
May I ask, have you talked to the Community Foundation about paying funds from them? Is it funded from the Gaming Commission?
We have gone a couple times. I don't think we've got more than a couple hundred dollars any time that we have gone to them. The thing of it is, we're looking for partial operational funds, and they don't do that with that money.
Three years.
So in order to get the doors open and get somebody in there working, we're looking for more of an operational funding.
Have you applied to both of the ordinances?
City, county, and then?
Yes.
Do I see a third, third? I think it's on the back.
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna suggest that we put it on a wish list for the budget, not incorporate it in the budget, but put it on a wish list. I know there's some down things coming out of the budget, I mean, one of the bills we're looking at takes this, the state's doing, takes this much money. There's a lot of nickel and diming stuff that might come down to the state, that takes money away from us, plus I think we need to look at the whole package, as Lou was talking about, of what we're doing with the other groups. Put our wish list, not incorporating it, put it on the wish list.
As we look at the budget in the next couple months?
Mm-hmm.
Looking at what we have to work with.
Right.
Okay.
Mayor? A few years ago, you came to the Board of Education with a request, and you were directed to our nonprofit organization, I think it was before this group of commissioners. Is that correct, Mr. Barr? And they came in, and we directed them to apply for some nonprofit money. At that time, I thought you all had secured a location on Franklin Street or somewhere?
We were looking on Franklin Street, it was the old banking building, but the person who has that building, they're trying to sell it, and they did not want to negotiate any kind of lease or anything at that point. This, what we're looking for right now is temporary, looking three to five years in order, like I said, get out into the public, get a real strong programming effort going that will allow us to bring people into our organization. They are now looking for new board members, as a matter of fact, so things are constantly moving forward. What the thing of it is, is that we cannot properly house the things in the home anymore. It's just not, it's just not viable at this time. So they are looking for that temporary space, and then eventually down the line, their long-range plan is to get a building in the Jonathan Street area, and build it in the Black community, the permanent location.
Yeah, I just remember somewhere on Franklin Street, I thought the...
Right, yeah, that one, like I said, they're trying to sell the building, and they didn't want to, they already had two leasing, leasing's in there, and they were trying to really sell the building, so that fell through.
I did fill out a form.
Any other questions or comments from council members or commissioners?
You just want to make, or it's not your intent that this is an annual request? Or is it?
It's a request for three to five years, yes. And by that time, we're hoping to be...
We need to think about that, too.
And we are working also with the component of the board raising their share, and then the state is also included into putting money in at later time. But we have to get open in order for the state to come in to contribute to that budget.
Any other comments or questions about the Dolman Black Heritage Museum? Okay, thank you. Thanks, Ms. Perry, for being here. And I'm sure you'll be available, if anybody has any questions, they'll be able to get in touch with you. The next item on the agenda is one of the hot topics of the day, and that is the Economic Development Commission's strategic plan, which was unveiled at the Maryland Theater, how many weeks ago now? Just a few weeks ago. And I really have no specific, you know, thing to address with this, but again, I thought it would be a good place to start a conversation about where we think next steps might be in terms of implementing this strategic plan. So would anyone like to start off that conversation?
It's interesting that you say that, Mayor. Our board certainly had a nice discussion on this, and we came out with several, sort of a short to-do list. I don't know if the, I did not bring my notes with me, I don't know if any of the other commissioners did, but...
Are you trying to describe what you did?
Well, I don't know if that's pertinent or not. I don't want to say stuff that's not true. But we did discuss it, and we came up with an action plan to empower the Economic Development Commission to come back to us in a, what, a very short time? And help me out here, fellas, it's like five items, five items, low-hanging fruit kind of stuff, we want to make sure what resources they need is compatible with the resources that we have. And that, I'm gonna call out Commissioner McKinley, he said he wanted to put a policeman by the bookshelf, so to make sure that the plan did not wind up there. So I think we're taking some definitive steps.
Yeah, and you know, previous to that, where the Economic Development Commission last Thursday approved the strategic plan, formally approved the plan. We accepted it, or adopted it, and we, as we said today, accepted that, as we've said, and gave them some direction as they moved forward with it. But I wanted to ask, what plans, what leadership role does the city see themselves playing with this strategic plan?
Well, I think there were certainly a number of recommendations that came out of that plan that called for more cooperation between the city and the county, and I think, I think there's certainly room for that. I think that there's areas where we can look at combining efforts of staff, I'm not particularly sure about consolidation necessarily at this point, but I think certainly there's always more room for cooperation. I think, I was glad to see that downtown was a focus for the Economic Development Commission report. I think, as everybody has said, I think we all have an understanding now that as Hagerstown goes, so goes Washington County, that it's a huge, either a driver or an inhibitor to the growth of Washington County, whether or not Hagerstown is growing. So I think there are still things that I'm trying to absorb and take a look at. I think there is potential for controversy when we start talking about annexation and water and sewer policy, but I think that, you know, the city, as far as I'm concerned, is looking forward to being a partner with the county in driving economic development and growth, not only in Hagerstown, but in the Washington County community as a whole.
And if I could respond, you know, this, I'm sure this study and this work that was done was neither inexpensive nor done without having a use for it. And I note that one of its specific recommendations is, under strengthening Hagerstown City Center school board offices, secure commitments to relocate administrative offices downtown. And I just say that because at some stage of our lives, one either has to say, spend a lot of money on studies and recommendations and follow them, or what do we have studies for? So right now, we're in the process of determining where the Board of Education is. We just unveiled a study January 26 that recommends putting it downtown, and, you know, that's gonna fit into the next conversations we have, but I, and I think the city is devoted to following that strategic plan and many others of them, but if we find what happens, is you spend all this money and this time and this energy to develop these things, and then get these recommendations, and then find out that, right after you pay for it and you get the recommendations, you don't follow it, then they become like nothing but a bunch of bureaucratic taxpayers' wasted money. So I would recommend that we try to start following some of these recommendations that are being made, and use the resources and influence we have to make these things happen. And we do have both the resources and the influence.
Just so I could understand correctly, I know that the EDC adopted it for a recommendation for approval by the Board of County Commissioners. Did you say the Board of County Commissioners approved it today?
Let me explain a little, if I may, what exactly we did today. The Commissioners, EDC Board, last Thursday, of course, adopted it and forwarded it to the Commissioners.
Right.
Today, the Commissioners accepted the plan and determined what steps would be taken to effectuate recommendations in the way that we forward to identify goals and create action items, that would have a specific timeline, specific dates for each action item to be completed, and ultimately reporting back to ensure that those dates and the action items associated with those dates were met, and determine if the specific goals were ahead or behind schedule. Now, that being said, first, the goals have to be identified. So the recommendation was to take it back to the Economic Development Committee and ask for the top five priorities from the plan to be brought back to the Commissioners, including the Commissioners' determination of their priorities. We can then begin to create any subcommittees necessary for research, recommendations, et cetera. That would tie in with the action plan and affected parties. If it's the city of Hagerstown that needs to be in on the discussions with Economic Development Commission or the board, if it's outside parties, whatever the case may be, they would be tied in with prioritization of the goals, and one by one, those goals were some, in some cases, some things are working, and it would be concurrently, would be, would be chronicled according to the action plan, and whatever necessary steps taken to make sure that those goals are reached in the timeframe specified. So that's what was determined today.
Yeah, I guess I'm just curious, because, as you note, clearly, the public sort of just received this plan, if you will, a couple of weeks ago. So for me, and I think of like a comprehensive plan, you know, as a document, you go through a identified process where the public has an opportunity to review the plan and make formal public comment, in which that body then considers that comment for incorporation into the plan after review, or sending it back to that body that comes up, you know, the EDC in this case comes up with that plan. So I guess I'm just curious, are you going to formally, is the Board of County Commissioners gonna formally adopt this plan? And if so, is there a specified time period, time period for opportunity for public comment? Because I guess for me, as a councilman for the city, I see us as no different than any number of other entities that are reflected in this plan, that would have the opportunity to sit down, and, you know, I have a number of comments, obviously, I've went through the plan, and I've identified them, but I would assume that as an entity affected by this plan and identified in this plan, that we would have the opportunity to say, here are our comments associated with the plan to you, the board, for you to give back to your EDC for consideration. If that's not the case, and it's strictly a county plan that references the city, then I'm not sure what comment process we do have.
You're absolutely right in your, your original assumption, Mr. Alshar. We did not adopt the plan. We just agreed to say, hey, this is a great job, thank you so much. We certainly want to hear from the city of Hagerstown. Boonesboro has an economic development, I don't know if they call there's a commission or a board, but we have eight other municipalities that we're waiting to hear from as well. I think what's problematic, and where you might be going with this, but you can correct me if I'm wrong, is what methodology do we use as a government body to gather those comments? We can have another public meeting, we can have two or three public meetings, we can say, if you have comments, send them on, you know, snail mail, electric mail, whatever. We in no way want to stifle any town or individual from having comments. I think, well, all we've done is try to set some large parameters of how to move forward.
But who's going to consider them, and under what format? In other words...
I think when the Economic Development Commission adopted this strategic plan?
Yeah.
They very clearly stated, they know we're not going to be using everything in this plan, they know there's going to be adjustments needed, and they're willing to make the adjustments necessary to make it a successful plan. So you being on that economic, or being part of the Economic Development Commission, you're gonna be able to bring your concerns to the Economic Development Commission for everybody.
Yeah, but I mean, they're my concerns as a member of that board, they're not, I hear you, you're waiting to hear back from, you know, eight towns. I'm just curious, you know, did you say, hey, towns, here's the plan, you know, you have 60 days to comment, and...
Oh, no.
...affections that apply to you, because...
It's free-form.
And a good example is, you look at, you look at page 14, and this is just, I'll use this as just one example, but it talks about the strength and range of scale of social services provided to large, low-income, needy populations by the state of Maryland, concentrated in downtown Hagerstown. But there's not a single table in this plan that identifies that as fact. So when I read this plan, it is a gross generalization of...
Bring that fact table to the commission meeting next week.
You know, I mean, of an item. There's no opportunity or avenue, and I'm trying to figure out how I provide that comment back to you, do I go through this as our elected body? And we provide a list of comments to you or the EDC to consider, because otherwise, they're just sort of floating out there.
I think that would be too restrictive. I think we want to do, it's like a blog, you know, you want free-form, doesn't have to be really pretty. We can get back and refine those kind of things. I think it's up to the individual citizen, town, other entity, whether it be a Rotary or an exchange service club, to pick the form that works best for them, and we can use our EDC commission as a gathering point. I think what we said is, let's try to, what is it, Greg Murray's always saying, how to eat an elephant, one bite at a time. So our first bite may be the top five that the commission, but we will take each one as it comes, and all comments are welcome in any form.
I think, to blow Chris's question down, is how does the city have input into this economic development plan or strategic plan? And I'm thinking, our Economic Development Commission is the Washington County Hagerstown Economic Development Plan. I think we have at least two members, two voting members from the city of Hagerstown, or is there more on the Economic Development Commission? And I believe what you carry into that meeting, when they're developing their priorities, because we charge them with bringing the priorities back to us, I think you'll carry a lot of weight in that committee, as far as developing those priorities. So I think that, Chris, is a partial answer to your question, the Economic Development Commission, of which you are a member. You'd be a great conduit to bring to us, to the Economic Development Commission, the priorities that the city has.
Well, the, there are two elected members, Mr. Alshar and Mr. Munson, and then they have an appointed member as well, and that's Kate Rader from Hagerstown Magazine.
I guess what I'm saying is, the Economic Development Commission has been charged with developing priorities. City of Hagerstown is a major player on that committee, and therefore will have, I believe, a strong voice in the development of this strategic plan.
Could you maybe speak to the structure of the EDC, because I know that that's been in a state of flux recently, and what's the plan for the future? I know there were some recommendations, excuse me, about some kind of quasi-governmental, nonprofit kind of structure. Has there been any movement on that, or any discussion?
Could I just, could I answer some of this? The plan itself, obviously, has many recommendations and many options for each recommendation. So the first step in ensuring that there's a manageable, effective way to institute goals and accomplish those goals is going to be identify the top five priorities that we want to see come out of this plan. Now, that doesn't do a wholesale edit as far as things that need to be added, things that need to be changed, et cetera, or subtracted, but what it does is say, our top priority of coming from this plan may be the options of the structure of economic development. So given that, all the players then will be contacted to get together, discuss opportunities, obstacles, advantages, anything that relates to that first priority. We'll then bring that back to the Commissioners, there'll be some decisions made, and we'll have a timeline to effectuate, given an action plan with specific dates and target end date to accomplish that goal, for number one. Then we go to number two, what's the second most, the second highest priority, same thing happens. So during that, there may be one that talks about downtown, and one of the things that it states in there is, Commissioner Alshar said, is about social services downtown, but it doesn't provide a lot of fact. And in that regard, that comment will have to come in, and we'll have to have someone that does some research and provide those facts, so that that conversation can be specifically productive and...
Data-driven.
Data-driven, and create an action plan then. Data-driven and create an action plan then, including creation and receipt of that data, so that specific topics can be discussed. And again, decision made at the end of the day, back to the Commissioners after all parties have had their say and have been involved in that process. And we'll continue down through a multi-year process of accomplishing the goals that are chosen as most to least critical, so that we can move forward with execution of the plan. Now, the plan itself, and the Commissioners did not adopt it, the Commissioners accepted it, knowing that that plan has a lot of those issues that Commissioner Alshar stated. There's a lot of things that need to happen so that each of those discussion points can be effective and can be productive, so at the end of the day, we accomplish that goal. And that's going to happen as soon as we get back with the next discussion, that Commissioner Munson and Alshar will be able to think this, Hagerstown actually has two appointees, one may be coming off, that we'll have a reappointment, I believe, soon.
Okay. So, there's a total of four?
Right, total of four. So, we'll have that discussion at that level, and specifically then, it's time to, as Commissioner McKinley said, make sure that doesn't go on the shelf. That's where they're going to have to come back with immediately, top priorities, so that we can execute a plan to accomplish these top priorities, including participation of all affected user groups that need to be in the room for each discussion.
Well, I really appreciate that what I'm hearing is the desire for getting stakeholder feedback and making data-driven decisions and focusing on continuous improvement. I think those are important factors.
For me, I certainly want to explain my own point of view, but I can't speak for anyone else. But when the Hagerstown, Washington County Economic Development Commission, that is the appointed body, not our staff, but the appointed body, they went to chaotic lengths to fund this on themselves, there's not a county dollar in here. I think what it does, it's not our plan, it's the community's plan. So, as you read through it, perhaps you, Mayor, would find something that you could do in 10 minutes. Oh, I can check that one. You would go ahead and do it, because it's, your plan is as much as it is ours. And certainly, any of the other eight municipalities might find, there's a section in about, let's get together with the municipalities, and they could find something in this plan that they could do and check off that box. So, I think if, we certainly don't want to give the community the impression that the county has to implement any or all of this. It's all hands on deck, everybody is part of this plan, and we need to come together as a community to work so. So, in the free-form nature, Mr. Alshar's comment about social services and the desire for more data, note taken. And we, somebody, maybe it will be our staff, maybe it'll be Dave Engel's staff, somebody will help answer that checkbox. And so, this is a living document that's going to drive our actions for quite a while.
But each goal will be task-driven to actually obtain data, et cetera. Right? And a good example is downtown revitalization. If, you know, one of the highest priorities, which when we discuss it in EDC, obviously, that input's going to be critical, highest, one of the highest priorities is that goal, then obviously, that's not something the county's going to effectuate unilaterally, you know, without any input from anyone else, nor can the county do it by themselves, obviously. So, that's something that's in there to be adopted as a goal, and then develop milestones, how can we help that happen? But the primary stakeholders are not going to be the county, and that, in that point, we're going to be supportive of that, you know, and partners in that.
Any other comments or questions about the Economic Development Strategic Plan?
David, if you could get there, I assume the five points are public somehow, get that out to all of us, the action items. Greg could send us whatever.
What five points are that?
It's nice to understand. The ones you made today.
Oh, no, no, we...
Marty, we, I'm sorry, you wanted...
No, no, you explain it.
We are charging the Economic Development Commission with establishing their five priorities, the five things that they think are doable, the five things that they think will make for effective change in Washington County, believing that to try to do all of that strategic plan at one time would be absolutely impossible. So, we want to narrow down on those things that I talked about. So, they're going to, they're going to come back to us with that. That doesn't mean all the other objectives listed in that plan are going to be thrown out. We're just going to get to them five at a time or whatever. We'll bite the elephant off in the amount that we believe we can handle, so to speak.
Or the low-hanging fruit, as I think you said.
And the four city representatives will be part of that 1 through 5 process.
That's why it's thrown back to them.
I'd just like to know what they are having.
Yep, absolutely.
I think we all...
I'm sure.
No, it's not yet, Marty, they're working on it. We just said today...
The Commissioners didn't pick the five, they're charging them with picking that.
Yeah, and so then, everyone that's representing the city on the Commission will be part of that selection process.
Well, I think that's important to hear, because I think the city is obviously very concerned that its interests are being looked after and represented on the Commission. I do know that in terms of the strengthening the city's center, the things that are bulleted anyway in the PowerPoint summary are all things that I think are very important to everybody on the city council. So, I think we'll definitely find a lot of area for common ground to work on there. And again, getting that stakeholder feedback is part of our process for coming up with a redevelopment master plan, if you will. And if no one else has anything on the EDC strategic plan, it sort of segues nicely into our next item on the agenda, which is a downtown public-private partnership. We have heard from SORA, I guess it was a little over a month ago, they came in and did a presentation on the benefits of a major public-private partnership. Since then, I have met with representatives of the SORA group, along with members of the city staff, and I know individual council members have also been having conversations. I know that they're meeting with members of the community and stakeholders, and I think that's a really good thing, because I think we are definitely interested in getting something going here in Hagerstown when it comes to a major public-private partnership, or several major public-private partnerships. We certainly have a lot of opportunity. I think as soon as the economy turns itself around, I think Hagerstown still has a bullseye on it for development with our proximity to the Baltimore/Washington metro area, the fact that we are our own metropolitan statistical area in the I-81 corridor, I think it's going to do nothing but drive growth and development as soon as, and this is the biggest part of the equation, as soon as we see that private money coming back to be invested in our community. And I think what I hear them saying is, they're looking for the city, I'm talking specifically about the city, to come and say, look, this is what the plan is, and this is what we want. And then, the public-private partnership comes in to play when we actually go to actually putting that plan into action. And so, what I can share with you is that my goal is to take a look at our code. We have a lot of chapters in our code that deal with redevelopment, urban blight, vacant commercial, vacant residential. So, all of these things, I think, are important to take a look at as we move forward, because we need, I think we need to have a proper structure to put in place when we look at what kind of master redevelopment plan we put into effect. So, that's what I wanted to share about that. I think when it comes to the Board of Education, which is another topic, or a stadium, the redevelopment of our waterways, which is important to me, because I think that that's a great economic development opportunity that we haven't been taking advantage of, and I'm talking specifically about town run and the marsh run. Talk about a plan that went and collected dust on a shelf or on the wall on the fourth-floor conference room. You know, we have many plans that have been rolled out over the years, so it's a matter of finding out what those plans are, and again, reaching out and getting that stakeholder feedback as we move forward with the process of creating a master redevelopment plan. In other words, I think we're moving forward with work on getting a stadium. We had the Ripken Group come in, and we approved them to come in and look at alternative sites for a stadium. But I've never been of the mind that we have to have an either-or mentality, that we either do this project, or we do this project, and we can either do it here, or we do it there. I think we need to look at a master redevelopment plan that takes a look at all the different opportunities we have for redevelopment in Hagerstown, not just in downtown, but in the surrounding areas as well. Because my vision is truly one Hagerstown, one where all roads, bike paths, sidewalks, and waterways lead you into thriving and diverse and active downtown. So, I just wanted to put that out there and hear any thoughts that everybody else has about the possibility for public-private partnerships.
Well, again, I guess I'll speak up, and I don't think you can, for my purposes, I think both of these discussions, public-private partnership and the Board of Education, are both pertinent to my thoughts. One with the private-public partnership, what I would just remind everybody of, I keep asking the question, I keep getting the same answer, and that is, when we talk about SORA or any group of that nature, prior city administration found out what it's like to deal with people who constantly talk about what they're willing to put up, and then when it all gets said and done, it's like, pay us $2 million, and we'll show you how to do it all. A private-public partnership has to involve private capital. It just can't involve the private industry coming in and saying, pay us money, we'll tell you how you spend your money. And my understanding in dealing with SORA is that is not what they are about, they are about partnering in an equity sense. My understanding further is that they're not really seeking to do the master development plan for our community. They would be very happy to find that we already had one in place that they could come in with, but I think clearly from, as you said, Mayor, it hasn't been 100 days, so it's very easy to remember what was said in the election and what has been said consistently before the election and after the election by this administration, and that is, education is what this administration has set its eyes on for downtown redevelopment. And essentially, I think in thinking big, ultimately, we would like to see, you know, Hagerstown University, a four-year university in downtown Hagerstown with student housing. That is not something that we know is going to happen tomorrow. But we also know, if you don't start talking in concepts about getting that here, it will never come here. The Board, the private-public partnership, all of these things require one thing certainly, and that's capital, for either planning purposes or for building parking decks and acquiring property, so the Board of Education has the ability to say, it would not be any more expensive to be here. So, where I come to, is a little less than a year ago, when we were talking about a multi-use facility, both city and county government committed to $400,000 a year for 20 years for downtown redevelopment. I mean, we made it a point to say downtown redevelopment, not a multi-use facility. And I would just ask that we all recommit those funds. Clearly, nobody's committing, spending money to a project that does not exist. However, there is a Board of Education project out there that is going to be decided on soon. There is no question that the Board of Education does not come downtown without a parking deck, dedicate a parking deck for them, and without acquisition and demolition. It also seems, unless I misunderstand local government, that the funding source for the Board of Education is the county commissioner. Do I understand that correctly?
Sixty percent.
And if that's correct, then what I'm essentially saying, geez, if you continue to commit to us the money that you have, and we continue to commit, we would love to come back to you and to the Board in showing what we could do with a portion of that money to get the Board downtown. And I would think it would probably, just like the library, be the first time in Maryland's history that a municipality, I think, not to be wrong, actually contributed to a county school board project. And these are all monies that hopefully have already committed to downtown, so these could be monies, you get double-banged for your buck. You get City of Hagerstown money contributing to a county project, you get county money that's already been dedicated to essentially a city project that can be used contemporaneously for a county project, and it would be a win-win for everybody, and it would send a signal to the Board of Education that when we say we are serious about being able to supply these amenities to the Board to come downtown, that they understand there's, in reality, a funding source in place to do it. So, I'm not just speaking to my friends in the county commissioners, but also my fellow council members about this. I think this is the time and place to say that we're willing to dedicate or to follow the advice that we've gotten from almost everybody that wants to give us advice, and to understand that it is the furtherance of education downtown. That is, that is where we're going. You see what's happened at the CVS, we've all committed millions of dollars to that. And the last thing I will say about it, and we all know this, because we've all been feeling the pulse of our community, the excitement, the ebb and flow of what happened with the stadium and how excited some people were and how upset some people were. But there was true excitement in this community that something was going to get done. Right now, this whole community is looking at us, because candidly, they're looking at us and saying, they really are going to invest in downtown, and they are going to do something about blight, they are not going to have a brand-new library necessarily next to a bunch of condemned buildings, and that will bring in, I am convinced, we've seen it, we've seen the interest in further private investment, or we can go the other way and send the message that not only aren't we going to do this or that, we're not going to do anything anymore. And then, private investment is going to turn their backs on us, and I don't know what kind of private-public partnerships we can get. We have a lot of educational opportunities downtown, including the potential to team in with Meritas, who also has an interest. So, that's my pitch.
Thank you. Would anyone like to respond to that challenge, as I would call it?
The only thing I'll say about who's that, when the county committed $400,000 for twenty years, the city had a plan to include the stadium and all the things that go with the stadium and all the... At this point, there really is not a plan.
No, that's correct, Commissioner, and that's why I specifically say to you, I'm not asking for any commitment to spend the money. I'm asking for the continued commitment that with a plan, that if you see the plan in place for that amount or a portion of that amount.
Or larger amount.
Well, you know, I'm speci... No, 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 that's, you know, depending, because...
Asking about?
No, no, I'm not either. But at this stage of the game, there is, there is the potential for a plan that I would assume would not cost nearly the amount of money we're talking about, and that is specifically the Board of Education. It's a very specific item. The $400,000 was for a project that would have used that money. I mean, I'm not asking at all or expecting at all from either city or county to say they're going to commit $16 million to the Board of Education project downtown, not whatsoever. You all may be being asked by the Board of Education to commit $16 million or something. I'm just asking that we have that continued commitment. We don't have anything in our budget, we don't have $400,000 in the budget, we haven't done a bond issue for the $400,000, okay, because we don't have a plan to spend it on right now. I'm assuming, though, within the next month or two, we will have a plan to spend a portion of that money as it relates to bringing the Board of Education downtown. We would like to share that plan with you when it comes about, to show you the expenses associated, how it would work, what blight we could get rid of, depending on what sites we selected, and how that could fit into certain things. And again, my suggestion is that that potentially could be a win-win situation, unless I don't understand how the Board gets its funding, where, and you have the city and the county both trying to contribute to this. So, that's my request, not to spend it, not to tell us, here's the check, we've signed it, but to say, yeah, we're still committed to doing something in downtown Hagerstown, we're still committed with the right plan, and showing us how it works and seeing that it would be good for downtown.
My only point is this, and I'll shut up, is that... that we would probably, and I can only speak for myself, but I would not have committed to $400,000 just to say, we're going to do something downtown. It was because there was a specific plan--
And I understand.
--and all that. So, you know, for myself, and we can only speak for ourselves, when you have a plan, certainly listen to it again. You know, my objective as a commissioner is to do the best that I can for this county, this city, part of that county, and more than willing to listen to your plan, but I think we need that before we say we're going to recommit it exactly.
I understand. Okay.
And I think that the issue isn't whether or not it's 100,000 or 500,000 or, you know, some joint mix. The issue is this, and I think that the Economic Development Strategic Plan, for what it's worth, you know, I remember sitting several years back in that room with Suzanne Hayes, and she would sort of have everybody in the room, and the goal was pretty simple. This plan was intended to address the long-term infrastructure needs because we recognized two things. The first is no one single local governmental entity could do all of those things that it would like to do in its capital needs over a long period of time. It just can't happen. And the second is, we can't do all of them at once. And so the thought process, and I remember Joe Crowe at the meeting at that time, you know, the thought process was, okay, we've got these various local governmental entities, we have these various, frankly, private power brokers, you know, and organizations, and everybody sort of has ideas and agendas of what their top priorities are. But in order for us to structure this in a manner that generates the greatest return on investment, we would have to get those parties together and come up with some agreement on a established timeline of which public infrastructure projects would go in what order to garner that greatest return on investment to keep moving on to the next one. And I think that this plan, in its generality, sort of lays out a bit of that by identifying the airport and Mount Etna and city center and Hopewell, because those are all things we talked about at that time, but we said, you know, we can't do all of these at once, but we need to determine which of those we can do and under what sort of domino they would fall, and which ones sort of garner that return as they do occur, and in an order that is complementary to each of our respective capital, our long-term capital budgets. So a good example is Mount Etna Farms is going to occur at some pace of public infrastructure investment, and no one single governmental entity can do that. And there are other pieces that are crucial to that becoming as successful as it possibly can be. And one of those pieces, you know, that I pointed out when Greg was in here the other week was the fiber optic extension, which will, I guess, go to here in the center city, and I believe it will stop, and at some point it will be extended, just as the road will be extended, you know, out to the college area. And we've clearly identified that location as a, you know, a cyber, you know, technology-type location. So if that road construction occurs, you know, in the three-year down-the-road to six-year down-the-road timeframe, then we need to time our funding so that that occurs complementary and that fiber optic is extended, and we need to base that on what the state's timeframe is, just as plainly as there are investment plans for expansion at the airport. We need to figure out sort of where those priorities fit in. And so for me, you know, I don't think it's about, you know, whether it's 100,000 here or 600,000 there, but rather, as we sort of put them in the row and say, okay, we're going to knock this one out, and then the next one happens, you know, and it's this much, and each body sort of has that contributing participation in that process. And right now, I feel like, you know, there's talk of the stadium being, you know, a top issue, and the Board of Ed being a top issue, and getting Mount Etna done, and they're sort of identified in these plans, but not in any orderly fashion, and I think it's because there is that lack of cooperative direction from the elected bodies, being the driving entities that agree on those priorities, and the power brokers, frankly, that want those things to occur, you know, in that individual fashion. And so I think we need to somehow marry the two and determine what that public investment is.
I welcome the opportunity to say, I agree with you 100%, Mr. Alsher. Well said.
Well, and I think that is probably where the direction of the EDC might come in handy in terms of helping the different communities create those priorities for public infrastructure improvements. I do think that, well, anyway, I said it, anyone else want to chime in?
Something I think we need to do is look at our long-range bond capacity. We're talking about things without dollar signs attached to them, priorities, and we need to look what our bond capacity is going to be in the out years, and it ties right into what Kristin, in essence, is saying, is a joint capital improvements program, perhaps even putting in private sector, because I have yet to hear real private sector things from SORA or anybody else that convinces me. But if they're there, yeah, let's work them in. And here's where we need that, 2 million of private sector or 3 million, here's where we need it. We could do a joint, because in essence, what it is, is a joint capital improvements program.
Right, and if that private partnership--
But we need to do that just to see what our capacity is. We're still talking about stadiums, but we're talking about investing downtown. And there's something else I want to point out. The cost of that building downtown is, to the extent it might be more expensive, and I say might because there's adds and pluses and minuses to other sites, but that's not what's investing in downtown is what it takes to put it downtown, not the fact, if you build it out at Allegheny Energy or somewhere, you might spend the same amount of money on the structure. So, you know, it's, what's the difference to bring it downtown if there is one? You know, in other words, spending that amount of money, if you're going to spend it out there, you know, putting it downtown is not an additional cost unless there are additional costs for putting it downtown. In other words, you're not spending $16 million downtown. If you're going to do it somewhere else, it's not unique to downtown. We prefer you do it downtown, is all I'm trying to say. So, you know, we're looking at an incremental cost, but those are going to be pretty high if we're pledging parking decks. And so we have to look at all that and weigh what those costs would be and how they get paid for, and that would be a joint capital improvements.
But I think the return on investment is a crucial component. An example that we had at that meeting some years back was when Joe put up the map and showed us two interchanges on 81, and I think it was exit 80, if I'm not mistaken, where the interchange sort of over time had been limited by things that developed around it, and basically, you know, to invest in that didn't make sense because there wasn't an opportunity to capitalize on the private investment capabilities, because the interchange over time, the way it had developed, had been, you know, strangled by the property around it, if I'm not mistaken. But then we go up to the next intersection interchange and say, okay, you know, you may invest five here, and this one may be seven, but the seven you put here is going to get you three miles' worth of, you know, road space of additional private investment. And so, you know, if you had to pick one or the other, which one would come first? You know, obviously, the one that has that greater return on investment, I think, gets you there. The difficulty that I have on the private side is I think that that appears to be, to some degree, you know, chief's intention and Greater Hagerstown Committee's intention, and possibly EDC if it goes to, you know, becomes a quasi-governmental, private, nonprofit's intention, but those agendas cannot be individualized. They need to be prioritized by the elected bodies. There has to be buy-in by the collective majority of those elected bodies to say, here's the orderly fashion in which we envision them to occur, and at the point at which each one of those occurs, that private partner has to be ready to go, you know, or you go to the next one. And I think a good example of that is when Guy Altieri brought in his HCC capital budget and said, you know, as community colleges, we get together and we sort of prioritize, you know, which one goes next by those driving factors of what, you know, which one creates the return on investment in terms of, you know, enrollment growth.
Can I ask you just real quickly? How do those opportunity things factor in? Just today, you passed a motion to buy property on Washington and Prospect. We have in our CIP the end of what was a very good project between city and county, and that was the library, and I'm speaking mostly to the Massey property right behind, and we have a line in our CIP that we have not yet voted that says essentially, what do we do with that? So how do those sort of opportunity things that crop up, how do they fit in the scheme of the long term? Do you do them? Do you say, no, let's not do them?
Well, I think it depends on the scale. I mean, Barbara Graham is a prime example of that. I mean, there's an institution that likely wasn't going to reach the top of the, you know, the school-growth food chain for some time, but you have the opportunity to building and the opportunity for that dynamic financing, and it moved it up, you know, in that chain of events. So I think it depends on, you know, when those types of things pop up, it depends on the dynamic that is associated with that. You had, you know, a free building and you had, you know, dynamic financing that you clearly didn't have, you know, when you go to DeBuster. It just isn't the same. It isn't the same.
As somebody who started his career as an urban planner-- Plans don't solve things by themselves, and plans can't answer all contingencies. The thing that a plan is desirable to have, or at least a course of action, but to say, you know, first we're going to develop this property, then that property, it almost never works that way. You know, it all depends on what's available, and so a plan has to be pretty flexible and pretty, you just can't, something as complicated as downtown Hagerstown, have something that lays it all out, and it's all going to happen in some nice, neat order. And what you brought up is an opportunity. We have to take care of a gateway property that we need to do something about, and we're not quite sure yet, you know, right now, we want to at least restore it back to, if not functional capacity, to a structural-protected capacity, tear part of it down, and get it back on the private market. But, so, people say the city's doing nothing downtown. The last administration and this administration have been doing things this whole time, as most of you know, trying to facilitate things. Now we're talking on a larger scale, but just having a piece of paper isn't going to make things happen, you know. You know, I ask people, nobody's found a market yet. What's your plan for bringing a market in so that if we do a building, it's going to be used? And those are the kinds of things I need to hear, you know, from somebody. What's your practical plan for developing a market in Hagerstown, things like that? And until we can figure that out, I'm not sure where to go, so. But anyhow, all I'm saying is, these opportunities come up, and we've decided to take advantage of them despite not knowing all the answers.
Yes, it's a good job, well done.
Well, and it certainly is a frustration of mine, and I've shared this with the staff, that, you know, it does seem that we're being reactive instead of proactive when it comes to some of these property acquisitions as it relates to economic development opportunities. But you mentioned the Massey building, and I think there are certainly those kinds of eyesores, and maybe that would be considered low-hanging fruit that we can, you know, all agree that need to be redeveloped. I think the frustrating part, I think Marty has alluded to, is that the private, you know, we, the city keeps stepping up to take these projects on because the private sector is not doing it on its own, and so the, I think the whole hope has been the city will demonstrate what the possibilities are with downtown by taking some of the blight and removing it and either reconstructing it, rehabbing it, or even doing a complete, completely new construction.
But if you were able to more orderly prioritize and coordinate and agree upon and collaborate on those, you know, next major public infrastructure and investment projects, I think that gives the private investment community a better idea of sort of, okay, you know, here are how these things are going to go, you know, and here is the next logical step for that private partnership investment.
Here's a question I have for everybody. Would you be in favor of reviving the two-plus-two meetings that once were, where there would be some regular interaction between county commissioners and city council folks? What are the thoughts on that?
Anyone here, are you on that two-plus-two?
Kristin and I were on it.
Kelly Cromer?
Yeah, originally.
I found it very positive.
Back in those days, we were, excuse me. I'd say, I found it very positive, although having said that, those were the days of the fighting and the lawsuits, and we had a lot of really good discussions, but candidly, Kristin and, see Jim back there, I don't know that we ever accomplished anything, did we? I mean, I really don't know--
I mean, we resolved our differences on the allocation process, on the APFO--
Yeah, we did do that. I thought they were very good.
--issue on the allocation of sewage to the hospital relocation.
We did do that. Yeah, we did do some things. You have a better memory than I do. That's what happens when you're young.
And I don't know if it necessarily needs to be two designated people, you know, that meet all the time. I just think it's nice to have this regular interaction between the different elected boards and the city council, and not only--
Sometimes I think we meet with our sister city more often than we meet with the Board of Education or county commissioners.
Right. So I think, I mean, I think just the kind of conversation that we're having today helps us all understand where the other is coming from and may help us create common goals and a plan, and--
Well, I will say that some of the issues, because the development is not going on a whole lot right now, will come back up. I mean, there are water and sewer, as you referred to and the plan refers to, there are water and sewer issues, and I'm not going to say annexation issues, because I think we have pretty solid policy on that, but water and sewer issues and maybe related property revenue issues, how about that? That could be worked on, and they're not in the forefront now because there's not a lot of development pressure at the moment, but in a number of those priority areas that the Economic Development Plan mentions, those things will come up again. So they're sort of laying there.
One of the things I think we all need to look at are the kinds of incentives that we have to bring in large employers or any kind of business, but what, you know, we are obviously in a competitive way here, and we have Pennsylvania just to the north of us, and Virginia, West Virginia, so how, especially for those taxes on business, what kinds of structures can we put in place, whether they're special taxing districts or some kind of incentive to bring these businesses in, whether it's for the Mount Etna Farms when that ultimately gets developed, or even for downtown revitalization? What kinds of things can we put together really to reduce the burden on business for relocating and to bring good-paying jobs, and a lot of them, here to Hagerstown and Washington County?
But the key word there is "we," because if we, the city, don't share in some of the prosperity in the greater urban area, we're trapped, and, you know, and so getting that "we" resolved is the issue, you know, somehow, you know, whether it's Mount Etna or, well, any of those other areas, it's something that somehow we have to share to help our issues and our prosperity and the load we're taking off the county. We have to have a revenue share.
That will be a topic for future discussion. Any other comments or topics for discussion that we want to?
I have one.
Please.
I don't know if you've talked to many of your Frederick County Commissioner counterparts, but Paul Smith over there, basically, when that county, I guess, was looking at the privatization direction for its public services, and I think ultimately decided against that direction, he convened a committee, I think it's called the synergies committee, but basically, a representative from the city, the county, the Board of Ed, and the college have a committee-- representative from the city, the county, the Board of Ed, and the college have a committee, and they meet at least monthly, and they have went through a process of reviewing what each of their departmental entities do. So it isn't a process of consolidation, it is a process of cooperation. And they have identified areas from, you know, from IT to health insurance, to public works, you know, and purchasing, and all of those things. And, you know, each department has sort of came in and presented to that committee, here's who we are, here's what we do, you know, here are areas where we can cooperate. And there's about 150-page report that sort of came out of that, of identified savings. And at the end of the day, you know, being the four largest sort of public entities, that's a savings to the taxpayer. It, in my mind, worked out and is working out fairly well for, you know, for that community, and something I think that, you know, that I would like to see duplicated here, because I think it would be beneficial to sit down and understand why we have different insurance plans for our different local governmental bodies, why we have different operations for public works, and, you know, public safety services and those things. And at the end of the day, if nothing else, it was good in explaining to the public at large, sort of, you know, who those folks are, how they operate, the fact that in a lot of cases, they're already communicating and cooperatively working, and, you know, it's all, it was all televised meetings, and like I said, I think it worked fairly well in providing that public an awareness. But I think in addition, you know, the economy basically drove that to some degree to look at, you know, and there were real savings identified without the necessity to, you know, gravitate automatically to privatization, or gravitate automatically to consolidation, which are sort of the two fallbacks that, you know, folks use at times to say, this is the only solution to government expense, and it wasn't. You know, and there were savings achieved, and, you know, and it was done in a cooperative fashion. So I would throw that out there and offer to the county that, and the Board of Ed and the college, that we sit down and convene such a committee, you know, I think they're in their 18th or 19th month of meeting, and, you know, they've got timelines, and, you know, different departments come in and report back, and it's worked out good.
Makes sense to me. Just remind me, Greg, does the county purchasing office help out other municipalities?
Several things were done currently, and to be able to expand on, since the county exists, would certainly be a good idea. That's a great idea, what Commissioner Alshire said. We do have cooperative efforts in purchasing, county purchasing does some of the purchasing functions. We do have in IT, we have substantial amount of cooperative efforts there, not any with City of Hagerstown, but school board, we have our cooperative school board, City of Hagerstown, Washington County Library, I think there's someone else, but anyway, we have that already. We have done many public works things together that, you know, Rodney and Joe have worked on, that we continue to try to expand on. So there are, you know, several things right now that we do work together on, especially at a staff level, and enumerating those and further discussing options is certainly always a good thing, as Commissioner Alshire said, that'd be, you know, something we could certainly all benefit from.
So how do we kick that off?
Justice?
I'm not.
Justice?
Oh, we just did.
We do also have.
Kristen sent us a, some sort of a chart or a plan as to how we can get going forward with that.
Yeah, I mean, I definitely don't have any intention of reinventing a wheel, you know, just borrowing one that seems to roll pretty well.
Is that 150-page report, is it available on?
I have it PDF. I don't know if it's available.
Could you email it around? That'd be great.
We do also, of course, have council of governments that meets periodically to discuss municipal issues, county issues, and see where there's common ground, or upcoming events that we may need to all look at as a unified body. A lot of the environmental initiatives, with our watershed implementation planning, sustainable growth initiatives, et cetera, there's going to require a large degree of cooperative efforts between city and counties to make that all work, you know, with the available loading. So that's always good discussion, and something that I think jointly works well, and individually works very poorly, and is much more expensive than if we work cooperatively on those.
All right. One thing I noted, President Baker here, looking through the pile of handouts that we gave you, one of which is the downtown parking study. I'm not sure that everybody's had an opportunity to review that, but we did include that for you as well, because there are a lot of misconceptions out there about what exactly the parking situation is in Hagerstown, and so I found this to be a pretty helpful document in clarifying some of those questions that people have. Any other issues or questions, comments for the good of the cause?
Yeah, I'd just like to congratulate all the newly-elected officials. I'd like to congratulate all the old officials that were re-elected, and looking forward to the next several years of working with you. I think as we have more and more meetings, we're certainly going to get more and more comfortable with each other, and I think the important thing is, everybody wants to see great things for Washington County, including Hagerstown, which is Washington County as well. And it's just going to, you know, it's going to take some time. It took, I don't know how many years to get to this point, and it's going to take us probably that many years to get to where you're thriving again.
Well, I also thank everybody for being here, and look forward to moving forward in that spirit of cooperation very much.
Let me also just follow up with this. This is a good meeting. Thank you all for being here. We spent quite considerable time this afternoon courting the Board of Education, to quote somebody over there. And to the extent, in particular, that you're the funding authority, and whatever happens to education in this county, we'd appreciate any assistance you could provide in courting the Board of Education too. Downtown, downtown needs to be rebuilt. They're not the key to it, but they are an integral part of it. And ultimately, decisions are going to have to be made to pay for it, and the city's willing to, as Lou said earlier, the city's willing to do its share. So, thank you.
Well, with that, we will close our joint meeting with the Board of County Commissioners. I guess we'll take a five-minute break so we can properly see each other. All right, we're back in action here, and at the work session, part of our agenda, which is the preliminary agenda review. Bruce, you want to comment about the topics in the agenda?
Folks are just saying it looked pretty straightforward, which it is. We do have a purchase on your agenda for next week, for the engine purchase, if you have any questions on that. Doug Dehaven and Captain Mark Cluck are here. It's part of our CIP project, part of the contribution from the company. Doug, that held up okay, as assumed. Want to just confirm that?
Yes, they're prepared for one-third, calls to the apparatus and the equipment.
This would be a replacement engine for Engine One.
For First House Company, right.
And then the existing engine goes in as a reserve engine.
Correct.
In the department's operations.
Yeah, we've cut back in years, down to one. This engine's fair shape, that we'd like to stretch it out some more as a backup. We're finding the one reserves not holding up for the fleet, two would be more reliable for us, to always keep the fleet, the numbers that we have now in service and running.
So, not something we do on a regular basis, but certainly part of our operation, and they've got a good process in place to select the engine and go through the process. Is that okay with folks?
Yeah, thank you all very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then the other one that might be just a little bit unusual would be the extension contract for city light, electric service rates. And Nathan Frittinger's here. If we could just take a minute just to make sure, this is something we gave you a heads-up on, but we've got some good results here.
Yes, once again, we're here to ask for approval to extend our purchase power service agreement by another year, which will take us to the year 2015. It'll begin June 1, 2014. Based, compared to the price we will be seeing this June 1, 2013, of 5,436, we'll drop about a percent to 5,390 for another year. Now, when we did the extension, the 1314 extension, we were offered a two-year deal, and since we didn't take that, went with a one-year deal, over those two years, we will be seeing savings of, in generation and transmission costs of approximately $1.8 million in purchase power, so.
Good work.
Thank you.
Good job.
Any questions?
Thanks a lot.
So those were the two I just thought I would highlight a little bit. Got any other questions? We've got staff here. I think the others tend to be a little bit more routine in terms of agenda items.
Anyone else? Comments or concerns? All righty then, we're going to move into the city administrators' comments.
None from me this evening.
All right. I'll start to my left this evening with Mr. Munson for council comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to say that I appreciate the Board of Education meeting with us today, and I appreciate the County Commissioners meeting with us today. Hopefully, those meetings will result in something good for the people of Hagerstown and for the people of Washington County. Thank you.
Mr. Alshire?
I don't have any.
Mr. Brubaker?
Yes, just briefly, I did refer at the Board of Education to a state piece of legislation, and on the MML Legislative Committee, which I'm serving on this year, we're going over four pages of state bills, going over in detail, maybe 20 or 25 of those bills, and the rest, looking at taking positions for the municipalities around the state. And so if there's something, I think, I mean, a number of them affect us, but they affect all the large cities or all the municipalities. And I've been confident that positions I've taken in MML has taken, has fairly represents us, so, but we are working on that. And I apologize, but there's just a long list of bills to get through, and I find I can't transmit it to you all. So if you have questions about something that's coming up, you know, I'm here. We've also set up a joint, or a subcommittee on county, city finances, and taxation and revenue issues, alluding to what we talked about tonight. And I've been appointed to, in fact, I made the motion to establish it, and I'm serving on that, that committee. It's going to report just within MML at first, trying to develop an MML consensus on city-county finances. It's been a long, long time since that was looked at.
Well, I appreciate your work with the MML, and you do a great job representing Hagerstown's interests, and you bring a lot to the table, so thank you very much for doing this. Mr. Metzner? Ms. Nye?
I have two things, Bruce, one, I guess, was yours, and that would be the tickets for the lights at where the cameras are at. Has there been anything as far as a discussion on where these people?
Yes, instead of coming in here and really being upset that this isn't the place that you pay, because I continue to do.
Are you saying you know a lot of speeders, Ms. Nye? Is that what you, you have a lot of speeders calling you, asking where they can send their bills?
No, when I had asked the question about the people coming in. Yeah, when they came in, this is not the place to pay, and they're confused, and of course, then they get hostile to some of the employees downstairs. So we need to know if the wording has been changed. They're seeing City of Hagerstown, I believe, on that, are they not?
Yes. In fact, I just met with the vendor this afternoon, that's where I was this afternoon, while you were at the board meeting. I talked about the language on the back and making it more clear on the back of that citation, so we're going to look at that. We also talked about doing counterpayments for downstairs, and to, there was a, maybe an interest of doing that here, making payments here, giving an option to make a payment here. I think some of the council members have mentioned that, so we're going to look at that as well. I think that can happen.
Okay.
So, looking at both those issues, we did talk about those today with the vendor.
Okay.
So, make it clear, more clear language on the back of the citation.
Yes, because they, they did not, I mean, they assumed, the ones that I've talked to thought that they should pay it here, and that was not the case.
Sure, because it says City of Hagerstown, and it has a City of Hagerstown symbol on it. But the PO box it gets mailed to is actually out here on the dual highway.
Yeah.
For the processing center. So I know it's a bit frustrating when you walk in downstairs and you want to pay your ticket, you know, and.
Yeah, there were some hostile people.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah. That's what I needed to know, because I had asked about it, and I just wanted to know how far it had gone.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, so I followed up with them today, and I think we'll be able to bring that back as a solution for you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for that update.
The other question is with the abandoned buildings that we have, and with the one that we just had to fire in, from what I've been told, it was not secured. Are all of our buildings now, the buildings that are owned by anyone else, do we know that they are secured?
Yeah, I don't think we can ever say we know every privately-owned building is secured.
Okay, but how is it that we can get to that we at least see that there are some? Can the city take a part in that? Because unfortunately, as it goes on, until summer gets here perhaps, we could be seeing even more.
Mm-hmm.
So who is it that looks at it? Is it code? Is it the fire marshal? I mean, you know, when we're talking.
Yeah, John Lestition and Chief Dietrich and I did meet in terms of some of these currently vacant buildings.
Boy, this is mental telepathy night. Okay.
And so. As far as securing buildings, as a matter of routine, the code administration staff not only respond to, but secure buildings. And we turn around, we bill the property owner, we charge the property owner for the price of securing the building, plus an administrative fee. So we respond both to complaints of unsecured buildings. Sometimes that's from a citizen, sometimes from the police department, as well as from proactive patrol, the inspectors drive around, checking the buildings. They'll see an open window, an open door, and they'll go ahead and take the time to secure it. Unfortunately, sometimes people just break into the places, and as was the case here.
And knowing that that can happen, but my concern is, is that we have so many of the older buildings downtown, you know, and not that we don't have them out elsewhere, but this is a prime location, because we've got a lot of prime people who need to have places to go and lie their head at night. So that's what I needed to know.
Yes.
If somebody's on top of it.
As a matter of routine, we do respond to, as well as proactively secure, buildings throughout the city.
Okay, looking at is my thing. Okay, thank you. That's it.
Thanks. The only comment I have is to echo Mr. Munson's gratitude for the Board of Education hosting us today, and also for the Board of County Commissioners coming in here today. I will add that I took a tour of the Police Athletic League facility over at the Fairgrounds Park. They continue to battle the elements somewhat with the leaky roofs that they have, and I just want to thank them for all the good work that they do with the kids out there, because I know that they otherwise are keeping busy, kids that could easily be getting into other activities that wouldn't be as productive. So I thank them for their work, and hopefully the city can continue to be a good partner with them in providing that facility for them, so.
If we could, I think, is that Blaine Snyder sitting in the back? If we could just acknowledge Blaine, because he's with Engine One, certainly been a good partner on this engine purchase.
I don't know what it was, I'm sorry, I'm late. I thought it was a call.
You bought us a new engine.
Working pretty fast, though.
We just volunteered you to buy a new engine.
Okay, that's fine.
All right. Well, thank you for that. Okay, if there's nothing else, then we will adjourn the meeting. Thanks so much.